Good evening. We'd like to welcome you out to this March the 11th meeting of the Flagler County Planning and Development Board. First item on our agenda is a roll call. Madam Secretary.
All right. Michael Boyd.
Here.
Anthony Lombardo.
Here.
Michael Goodman. Ron Long. Dan Wilcox.
Here.
Mark Langello. And then we do know Timothy Connor is here.
Mr. Connor had to run out to his car. He'll be right back.
Thank you.
All right, if you'd all please join us in standing and pledging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the February the 11th regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. We have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. These proceedings are quasi judicial. The audience should refrain from clapping, booing, or shouts of approval or disapproval. To avoid potential legal ramifications and possible overturning of a decision by the courts, a public hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. There will be time limits observed in these meetings. Staff has 10 minutes for a presentation. The applicant has 15 minutes for a presentation unless the board by consensus allows them more time. The public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, five minutes if they're speaking on behalf of an entire group. In the applicant rebuttal and closing staff comments are 10 minutes each. Item number four is a quasi judicial requiring disclosure of ex parte communication. Does any member of the board have anything to discuss?
Excuse me, Chair. Last meeting, we did have an item that was continued till to this meeting. That was the application for review for the fire sprinkler request. The applicant did not get back in time with us to be placed on this agenda, but we did want to acknowledge that they'll be coming back to the next and because notice was completed and continued, we did want to just take a quick second if anybody from the public data come and want to speak.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak on that agenda item? Come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Raymond Royer. I'm from Pelican Lane, Flagler Beach. The only thing I have against a applicant, if you choose to approve the applicant's request, there was a motion made by the attorney that the fire inspector had denied the request in his letterhead. And if you do choose to approve it, I agree with the attorney that it does carry weight. And then if you do approve it, they put that on the approval in notations that there was a fire inspector denying. And I don't want to get into all the litigation of the codes and all that that was brought up about it, but there's a reason why he put that in there. And again, the fire inspector does hold the weight. Thank you.
Thank you. That take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four is quasi judicial. Anybody have anything to discuss? Seeing none, this is a request for a variance in the M1 Rural Mobile Home District. Project number 2023120050. Ms. Simone.
Good evening, Board. Simone Kenny Planner. This property is located out in Daytona North on Oleander Drive. The future land use is residential low-density rural estate. The zoning is MH1 Rural Mobile Home. There is no particular flood hazard being located in flood zone X. And the soils are primarily Wabaso fine sands and Panito Wabaso complex. And according to the National Wetlands Inventory, there are no wetlands on the property. This, the originally approved site plan was for an accessory structure for a carport, and it was supposed to be 15 feet from the left side property line. When they had their final survey conducted, it revealed that the carport was only 14.54 inches from the left property line, which is an encroachment of about 4.36 inches. That was about 2.6% of the total minimum required setback and does qualify for an administrative variance. However, there was a letter of objection from one of the nearby property owners, and per the rules of our Land Development Code, it then has to be brought to the Planning and Development Board for review. So to quickly summarize, the property is just over an acre. It's described as Lot 9, Block 159 of Daytona North. It did qualify for an administrative variance. However, there was a neighbor opposition, and that requires the Planning and Development Board to review. The variance request itself was for a carport for a 4.32 inch or 0.36 foot left east yard setback from the minimum required 15-foot side setback, again, which is 2.4%. And our administrative variance threshold is 5%. This is an after-the-fact variance, and again, there was a letter of objection made by the neighboring property owner. So to read the variance criteria into the record, the first guideline asks that there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in question because of its size, shape, topography, or other unique features that, when considered in whole or in part, creates an unnecessary hardship. And we found that while the lot is not particularly unique compared to other lots in Daytona North, the depth of the property, as well as vegetation along the property line, does increase the difficulty of finding and measuring that line. Guideline 2 asks that such conditions were not created by the affirmative actions of the applicant, and the applicant has acted at all times in good faith. And staff found that the applicant did make a concerted effort to find the property line and comply with the required setback, and the encroachment is minimal enough to have qualified for that administrative variance. Guideline 3 asks that the variance, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety, and morals of the community or impair the purpose and intent of this article, and staff found that it would not. Guideline number 4 asks that the variance, that no variance may be granted for a use of land or building that is not permitted by this article, and a carport is an accessory structure that is permitted in the MH1 district. And finally, it asks that the variance, if granted, be the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the hardship, and the requested relief is the minimum variance necessary. Your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria as listed in the Land Development Code have been met and therefore approve project number 2023120050 for a 4.32 inch left east yard setback variance from the minimum required 15-foot side setback for accessory structures in the MH1 district. Or you can find that all the variance criteria have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you could determine that more information is needed and continue the request to a time and date certain. And with that, I will close out awaiting any questions or comments from the board and submit my report for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Any member of the board have a question for staff? If not, we'll ask the applicant to come forward if they wish to make a statement. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sergey Shmeraka. My address, 40007.
Could you speak closer to the microphone, please, sir?
4007, Alejandra Avenue.
Thank you.
Dad, can I translate for him?
Sure.
This is our first time in a court, sorry. So really quick, one sentence to summarize. What happened was, property pin was cricket because it was in the trees. So when he pulled the straight line, one corner is four and a half inches was into the setback. So we called few times the surveys to come out. They couldn't find the pole. Sorry, our English, second language. They couldn't find it first time. Then eventually he cut down all the trees and he got to that and he found it. But, and I was doing all the translation, so we did the carport.
Left and right. I don't have a.
Yeah, so nobody lives next property, and it's lots of trees there, so he didn't know how far he can go or not go to. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll open it for public comments. Anyone, any member of the public wishing to come forward and comment on this item? Seeing no one approaching, we'll close public comments and refer back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance as stated.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, this is also quasi judicial requiring ex parte communication. Anyone have anything to discuss on this item? This is project number 2025010036, a request for variance in the AC Agricultural District. Ms. Simone.
This property is located out west off of County Road 304. The future land use is agriculture and timberlands. The zoning is agriculture. About the rear half of the property is located in flood zone A, and the front half is in flood zone X. And as you'll see later, the location of the house is in that flood zone X. The soils are, there are a couple spots of depressional and winter fine sand suggesting that there may be some isolated wetlands on the property as also shown by the National Wetlands Inventory. Here on the, on the left side, you can see the total size of the property and where the house is in relation to the rest of the property. And then I have it zoomed in so you can see a little more detail on the actual site plan. The house was proposed to be 25 feet exactly from both the left and right property lines, which is the minimum setback necessary in the Ag District, and it was approved with these setbacks. And then as the applicant, I believe, can go into more detail, there were a couple struggles with the surveying of this property. I believe there are multiple surveyors went back and forth, tried their best to get the foundation right. And then the foundation survey came back after they had started vertical construction and revealed that the house had shifted left or west 1.7 feet, resulting in that 1.7-foot encroachment and the left side 25-foot minimum setback. Again, to summarize, the property is almost 18 acres. It's described as a parcel of land lying in Section 26 and 37, Township 13 South, range 29 East of Flagler County. The variance request is for a dwelling for a 1.7-foot left west side yard setback from the minimum required 25-foot side yard setback. This is an after-the-fact variance, and no inquiries or comments have been received from neighboring property owners. Reading the variance criteria into the record, the first asks that there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property, and staff found that the property is unique due to its flagpole shape. While there is more space in the more northern flag portion of the property, this area is heavily wooded and would require substantial tree removal, as well as the fact that it is located in the flood zone. The width of the pole portion of the property where the dwelling is located is approximately 150 feet, as opposed to the normal minimum 200-foot width in the Ag District, and has left little room for air. Guideline 2 asks that such conditions were not created by the affirmative actions of the applicant, and the applicant has acted at all times in good faith. The proposed location of the dwelling being exactly 25 feet from both the left and right property lines has left no space for air, and the applicant acted at all times in good faith. Guideline 3 asks that the variance, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety, and morals of the community or impair the purpose and intent of this article. And staff found that provided that none of the neighbors expressed any concern or opposition to the variance request, staff assumed that it would have minimal impact on the neighbors and would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety, and morals of the community or impair the purpose and intent of this article. Guideline 4 asks that no variance be granted for a use of land or building that is not permitted by this article, and a single-family dwelling is a permitted use within the Ag District. Finally, the variance shall be the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship, and the 1.7 feet is the minimum necessary. Your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria have been met and therefore approve project number 2025010036 for a 1.7-foot side west yard setback variance from the minimum required 20-foot side yard setback at 9900 County Road 304. Or you could find that all the variance criteria have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you can determine that more information is needed and continue the request to a time and date certain. With that, I will close out awaiting any questions or comments from the board and submit my report for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. It might be irrelevant to this scenario. So they were 25, originally 25 feet on each side the way they drew it up. And then, but now all of a sudden, we have 36 on one side, and obviously the, the, just under two inches or two, two feet on the left side. Am I correct? Did the lot get bigger or did the house get smaller? Was I reading that right? One second, one second, one second. Or we just, should we just wait for the applicant?
Yeah, I believe that the applicant would have a better answer than I would.
Okay. All right, we'll just, we'll just wait on that.
We'll ask the applicant to come forward to the microphone if he wishes to make a statement and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Mike Morello. My address is currently 9976 County Road 304, Benel, Florida. So originally, when we, we got the property, 2020, I believe it was, there was no real guidelines of what, and what we were getting. So we basically stood outside with the surveyor and said, we're going down this tree line here, and this is going to be the property. And it was roughly, it was supposed to be 160 feet. So I had a little bit of play on both sides, which is 25 feet, because the house is 100. They surveyed it. When I got the survey back, it was incorrect. The, he said the coordinates were wrong. So I went back. We redid it. I thought everything was good. How can you make a mistake twice? So we started the process of laying out the foundation. I paid a survey to mark the corners, put the foundation in, thought everything was going smooth. Then the surveyor came back and said, wait, the coordinates are still not right. Went back down to the county. At this time, Mr. Emery's wife had passed away. I had to go back, file death certificate with that, go back, redo that. And I thought everything was hunky-dory. I, you know, I paid the guy to come and mark the corners out so this wouldn't happen and got all done, and it was already in the wrong spot. Everybody assured me it was okay, but I couldn't get out there physically with a tape measure because there was no, there was a stake in the ground, one or two stakes, and you know how it is when you're going over 500, 150, 160 feet. If you're off an inch or two, that's a foot or two. You know what I'm saying? So I didn't think there was a problem. There's nothing on the side of the house. There's no air conditioners or nothing like that. My son lives next door to me, so he doesn't have a problem with it. So that's kind of really where I'm at. I, believe me, I tried multiple times to get this right, but it just didn't happen. I even, in the beginning, I asked Mr. Emery if he would give me a little more room on the side so this wouldn't happen, and that kind of upset him. So I didn't want to, you know, push any buttons or think I was trying to get something, but I really tried to make it right. And it didn't work out. I don't do surveying. I do air conditioning, so I couldn't, couldn't check it.
Okay, Anthony, you got a question?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if it's just really a question or just clarity, I guess.
Yeah, no.
You know, it's not, it's not really a question. I was just confused in regards to how we added, we added a substantial amount of linear feet on, on one side.
Yeah, and it's, I'm not 100% sure if it was the surveyor, excuse me, or the concrete guy. I don't know if he screwed up his measurement or he started the block outside of the line. I don't know. I don't really know. I can't answer that. But it was definitely an oversight, and I tried to avoid it. Now here we are.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. This time, we'll open it to the public. Any member of the public wishing to come forward and comment on this item? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public comments and refer back to the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one opposition. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number six. This is also, also quasi judicial. Does anyone have anything to report on this item? Project number 2025020045, a request for a variance in the Industrial District. Ms. Simone.
This property is located on US Highway South. It is in between US 1 and the rail line. It is next to, I believe it's called John's Auto Parts and Junkyard. The future land use is industrial. The zoning is industrial. There's no particular flood hazard being located in flood zone X. The soils are a little bit of Miyaka fine sands and primarily depressionals. And as we see from the National Wetlands Inventory, currently, the property is almost entirely wetlands. And here's just another aerial shot so you can get a better idea of the location where it is. This application originally came in as a site development plan for an auto sales and repair shop. However, during the TRC review, staff commented that we didn't believe they had preserved or planned to replant enough of the protected trees. And so the original site plan shows that there would be a six-to-five-foot retaining wall, about three-to-five feet of fill. There is an auto sales, an auto repair shop, and a proposed garage. There is also about 31 parking spaces to meet the parking requirements of our code. And there is an over 5,000-square-foot stormwater retention pond to the rear of the lot, as well as the proposed septic and drain field to the south. Here is the tree survey that was submitted along with the application and shows that there were over 1,300 pre-development protected inches. And as we will discuss, last September, this board recommended approval, and then the Board of County Commissioners ultimately approved an update to our tree protection ordinance, increasing the minimum required protected or replanted trees from 20% to 70%. So 70% of the 1,300 pre-development index trees is over 900 inches. And this prompted the applicants to then apply for a variance. Here again, we can see the retaining wall and that parking. And I will take this moment to say that before applying to the county for their site development plan, the applicants did mitigate and permit the wetlands both through the St. Johns River Water Management District and the FDEP. And they received those permits in September of, and November of last year. So we have the 30 parking spaces, the stormwater retention pond in the rear, the septic. And then this image more accurately shows you where the perviest areas are. Again, remembering that there is that over 5,000-square-foot retention pond in the rear and that proposed drain field just below the buildings. So really, the only remaining plantable space is around the five feet behind the retaining walls and the front buffer space. Here is their proposed landscape plan. Because they had started engineering and designing this plan to get their wetland permits, they designed it to meet the previous 20% threshold. So they are proposing to preserve as many trees as they can, which was 96 inches, and then plant 165 inches, giving them a total of 261 inches, which would have met that 20% threshold of the, the former version of, of the code. Again, those trees are proposed to be planted along the retaining wall and that landscape buffer, along the perimeter of the retention pond, and in the front buffer area. And the preserved trees are mainly along the front property line, as well as the, in this case, the north property line as well. All of those sort of empty-looking circles, those are the preserved trees. And they're planting a mixture of live oak, magnolia, and other protected species. So again, to summarize, the property is just about an acre in size. It was 97% wetlands. Again, these, this has already been mitigated and permitted through the St. Johns River Water Management District and the FDEP. Those permits were issued in September 29th of 2023 and November 16th, 2023. Per state statutes, they could have applied for their site plan with the county at the same time as applying for, with the Water Management District. However, they decided to get the full wetland permit from the district before applying to the county. The topography, topography of the site requires a five-to-six-foot retaining wall, three-to-five feet of fill, and an over 5,000-square-foot stormwater retention pond with approximately 6,000 square feet of building footprint, 31 parking spaces, again, that are required by our code, and about another 11,000 square feet for driveway and turnaround space, and then another 1,200 square feet for the proposed septic and drain field. Approximately 8,000 square feet is remaining for landscaping or replanting. Approximately eight thousand square feet is remaining for landscaping or replanting. Again, there were, uh, one thousand three hundred and sixty-four pre-development caliper inches, ninety-six caliper inches are proposed to be preserved, a hundred and sixty-five caliper inches are proposed to be planted. Again, this totals two hundred and sixty-one post-development caliper inches, which would have met, uh, the previous twenty percent threshold. And then again, ordinance twenty-four oh six, signed September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, which was our updated tree code, increased the protection requirements for non-residential parcels from twenty percent to seventy percent. And it also designates the planning and development board as the Protected Tree Board of Adjustment and authorizes you to consider variances in specific cases where such variances will not be contrary to the public interest and where owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the section would result in unnecessary hardship. So reading the variance criteria into the record, there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property and staff found that the subject property is extraordinary. And there are exceptional conditions pertaining to the proliferation of wetlands on the property. The wetlands have already been mitigated through the St. John's Water Management District and FDEP. Engineering the site to be conducive with stormwater requirements requires a retaining wall and an average of four feet of fill. And trees cannot be preserved within the limits of the retaining wall because of the fill. Guideline two asks that such conditions were not created by the affirmative actions of the applicant and the applicant has acted at all times in good faith. The applicants began designing and engineering the site and received permits through the St. John's River Water Management District and FDEP prior to the county filing ordinance twenty twenty-four oh six, which increased the preservation or replacement of protected trees from twenty percent to seventy percent. The applicant had designed the site to be compliant with the former twenty percent requirement. And had the applicant begun the county permitting process only two months prior, um, this request for a variance would not be needed. And staff found that the conditions were not created by their own actions and they have acted at all times in good faith. Guideline three asks that the variance of granted would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety and morals of the community or impair the purpose and intent of this article. Uh, again, provided that none of the neighbors expressed any concern or opposition to the variance request, the staff will assume that the requested variance will have minimal impact on surrounding properties. The property to the south is the Florida East Coast Railroad. The property to the west is zone industrial and is vacant. And then on the other side of that is the property currently being used for auto repair and as a junkyard. To the north is U.S. Highway One and to the east is two vacant lots. And then on the other side of those is outdoor storage. The variance of granted would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety and morals of the community or impair the purpose and intent of this article. Guideline four asks that no variance may be granted for a use of land or building that is not permitted by this article and an auto repair and sales is a permitted use in the industrial district. Finally, a variance of granted shall be the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the hardship for the purpose, for the purpose of this section and unnecessary hardships shall mean, um, that without the granting of the variance, the owner would be deprived of all reasonable use of the property as allowed in the zoning district. And staff found that requested relief is the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the hardship. So your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria as listed has been, um, met and therefore approve project number two zero two five zero two zero zero four five for a fifty percent variance for the minimum required seventy percent preservation or replacement of protected trees at, uh, thirty-eight twenty-five U.S. Highway One. Or you can find that all the variance criteria have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you can find that more information is needed and continue the request to a time and date certain. And with that, I will close out awaiting any questions or comments from the board and submit my report for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a question. The, uh, application was submitted, uh, originally before the tree ordinance was changed?
They submitted their applications and engineered plans to the Water Management District and FDEP, um, starting almost two years before our ordinance changed. However, they didn't get their application into the county itself until about two or three months after the ordinance had been, uh, changed. But at that point, they already had all of the engineered plans and permitting through the district.
So it wasn't possible just to grandfather them in at that point?
No, because the, they didn't have their county-specific application in yet.
So for two, for two years, this applicant was, uh, engaged in mitigation and permitting at the state level. Is there any indication from staff that they delayed in that? That they, uh, were dilatory in, in pursuing that mitigation and permitting?
Delayed? Uh, no, it, it takes a long time to get the permits through the St. John's River Water Management District.
So that two-year process is pretty much a normal process in Florida for getting this kind of stuff mitigated and permitted at the state level?
It can be, yes.
They couldn't have done anything but hang on for the ride?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just a, in my opinion, it's just a matter of bad timing. I mean, it's, the, the, the people have gone through the process and it ju, it doesn't make sense not to approve it. I mean, they, they went to the whole process of getting the water retention, doing the layout, bringing in fill. I mean, I, I just don't see, uh, why they should be penalized because they missed the date that really was after the fact that they started, so.
Real quick, I just want to clarify, this, this landscaping plan that they put forward, this meets the twenty percent, right? The, the code before the new ordinance was enacted. Yeah, I think you just passed it. Right there, that one. This is the twenty percent?
Yeah.
Okay, and that meets the previous code? All right, cool.
I, I have a question, it's relevant really probably on my decision, but what was the, the significance of changing this ordinance from seventy to twenty percent? What, what prompted, what prompted that?
Or the way around?
Well, the twenty to seventy, sorry.
Yes, well, uh, there's, there's been a push, uh, from two directions at the county. One was, uh, from people concerned that too many trees were being removed under the existing code, uh, particularly in the hammock. And then on the other hand, you had, uh, the opposite effect in certain planned unit subdivisions where, uh, our code required the over treeing of yards. And so we wanted to go back and try to update our code to strike a balance between those competing forces and, and different situations. And, um, this is, this is what shook out. This is what the board adopted. And in this particular parcel of land, you have those unique circumstances where it's quite onerous or nearly impossible to meet that standard.
Right, it's, it's, I can understand the hammock, you know, but then when you, you get to, to this location, I could see where, you know, it doesn't make as much sense. Um, it's unfortunate that it has to cover all of it, you know, that they, they're being penalized or the next person along that's going to be, you know, developing a parcel like this on this side of town is going to have to, you know, be, you know, played by those, those same, same rules.
But that is why we, that is why we put these mechanisms in the code of the ability to seek a variance from this board. When you look at, look at the criteria, their particular situation and say, wait a minute, that's, that's not quite fair.
And that was going to be my question, are we going to possibly see a lot of this? It seems like we almost went from one extreme to the other. It was twenty percent, now we're seventy percent. We couldn't have landed somewhere at fifty maybe? I mean, it just seems like we went, uh, not enough, not way too much. So I'm imagining, I know that's not to be discussed now, that has nothing really to do with what we're doing now, but it almost seems like we went from one extreme to the other.
You could say that perhaps, but we'll have to see how, I mean, this is the first one that has come up in this way. You might have industrial lands that are already largely cleared of trees.
I mean, they should have been a separation between industrial and residential.
I agree.
I mean, it shouldn't be the same criteria for both.
There, there is different criteria, uh, to, you know, for, for example, on a residential lot, you're allowed to exclude the building, uh, footprint and ten feet beyond it. But in the industrial, you don't get that relief.
What I, what I see on this, you basically took a swamp and they did the hard part already. I mean, we shouldn't penalize them, really. It's my personal feeling, yes.
I would also just add for the record, uh, Mr. O'Connor, the, uh, the federal courts ruled in this time period that the state of Florida could no longer, uh, administer four oh four permitting and we had to hand it back over to the Army Corps of Engineers. And there was a lot of confusion and uncertainty about that process and I'm sure that contributed to the time, the lag.
That's unfortunate, but that's fine.
Okay, uh, would the applicant wish to come forward and make a statement? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Lena Goldfarb, uh, sixty-three Signal Hill Road, Staten Island, New York, one oh three oh one. And there represent Mr. Abrams, who is the owner of the land.
Good evening, you know, um, if anything else, you know, is you got to represent us to me, you got to explain to everything, you know, because, you know, uh, this is very help us, you know, thank you.
If you would, if you would step up to the microphone closer and speak a little louder, thank you.
First time doing this, so I apologize. Um, so yeah, basically this is exactly what happened. We, he has purchased the land back in twenty-one. Uh, he had no idea about the wetland when he initially purchased it. We discovered when we went to apply initially, which was back in twenty-one, realized it was wetland and then the very lengthy process. And yes, we do have a permit from the Army Corps and, you know, we did the mitigation with state and federal, um, very expensive process as well. We had pre-application meeting with a lot of the agencies through our, uh, previous engineer. We got cleared for everything before we went in to spend the money on mitigation, as I'm sure you all know what that is. And now when we applied for the build, we attempted to apply for the building permit and we got kicked back because of the new ordinance that was introduced. And at that point, we pretty much are here because we have no way out, so we are in your hands. If we do have to, we, we have no place to put it and we honestly cannot take on more of a financial hardship considering the mitigation and everything else that came along with it. So with your help and with God's help, I hope this works.
Adam, I have a question on that. Could they possibly put trees into a tree bank?
So that's one of the items we also noted in the ordinance is that the, the tree bank option becomes an option only through the planning board. And so one of the things we talked about with this and bringing it forward to the planning board is that you, you then would act in your capacity reviewing the variance, potentially you could, and maybe, uh, come back and prescribe contributions into the tree bank, but, but through, I think through the, through a variance request, because there's, the way the ordinance reads is, is that the, the tree bank option only comes through, uh, uh, consideration by the planning board.
All right, thank you.
That, that may fall under the financial burden also.
I was gonna say to Sam, if this was something where they were applying after the fact, they knew about all this, but this is something that struck them off out of the glue. So I wouldn't think the bank would be something we would require them to do.
Yes, I, yeah, this is exactly what I wanted to say. We, we already so much in with this. It's been three years, we've been working on this, you know, it, it, financially, we're just in a position where, you know, the, this lot is not worth what it would be if we had to, and plus there are rules for the bank as well, for the tree fund, there are rules, uh, that we found out, we have to pay for four-inch oak planted. We do not, I don't believe we have any of the valuable trees like that, but we would end up replacing it with something that serves a lot more value than what we have. And honestly, the hardship would destroy the project for us at this point, so please.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. This time we'll open it to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing nobody approach, we'll close public comments and go to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty percent, uh, tree variance.
Technically, it's a fifty percent variance to bring the requirement from seventy back down to twenty.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item number seven, this is also quasi judicial, requiring, uh, reporting any excommunication or any communication. Any member of the board have anything to report? Seeing now, and this is project number two zero two five zero one zero zero six five, a request for public use in the AC Agricultural District. Ms. Simone.
Right, this property is located out west at the corner of County Road three oh five and State Highway one hundred. This property is currently owned by the county. It was purchased back in twenty seventeen. Uh, currently on the property, there is a thirteen thousand square foot barn, uh, as well as a, a cell tower. The future land use is agriculture and timberlands. The zoning is agriculture. There's no particular, uh, flood hazard being in flood zone X. And the soils are primarily Wabasho fine sands and, um, Pineda Wabasho complex. And, um, the National Wetlands Inventory suggests there might be some isolated wetlands, uh, to the rear of the property, um, but far away from, from the site. So this request is for a public use for a new fire station for the county. The closest fire station in that area is about four miles south in the St. John's Park neighborhood. Um, the proposed project, um, has the fire station, it has three bays, uh, six storms, a kitchen and eating facilities, some offices, as well as a satellite sheriff's office. There are two main access points, the access to the south, which is both ingress and ingress. And it also maintains that access heading down south towards that existing barn. Um, there are about twenty-three parking spaces and you can, uh, egress again through that, uh, southern access point. However, um, once you get past the parking spaces and past the dumpster down there and head up towards the rear of the building, at that point, it becomes one-way and then it's only egress. So there, you can go through, uh, the three bays or you can go up by that proposed water storage loading area. Uh, it would be well and septic. Again, there's that, uh, water storage to the, uh, north of the site, um, stormwater retention pond. And then because that northern access is exit only, there would be do not enter signs, um, proposed at that access point. Here's just a quick look at the, uh, floor plan. Again, you have your three bays, uh, six dorms for the firemen, eating and cooking facilities, a couple of office spaces, a fitness room, that satellite sheriff's office, uh, decontamination room, um, and a covered porch area to the rear. Elevation's just for fun, so we know what it looks like. Um, that's the back elevation up top and the front elevation on the bottom.
Simone, this is all going north of the existing barn that's out there?
Yes, that's correct. And then here's just their, their landscaping plan. Uh, there's no, uh, index trees or protected trees on this property, but they are maintaining, uh, the required front buffer as well as their interior island planting requirements in, in the parking area. So again, to summarize, uh, the total property is over twenty-six acres, again, purchased by the county in twenty seventeen. The site currently has, uh, that thirteen thousand square foot barn and cell tower. The closest fire station and again is, uh, Station Seventy-One, which is four miles south in the St. John's Park neighborhood. Uh, the proposed site plan includes, uh, almost fifteen thousand square foot station with three bays, six dorm rooms, two office spaces, fitness room, kitchen and eating facilities, decontamination room and satellite sheriff's office. There's that water storage and loading area where they would fill the trucks to the north of the building. And then there's also septic well dumpster and a potential future building, um, uh, just to the east there. That, uh, depends on, uh, budget concerns at this point. I believe they were talking that if they had room in the budget, they would put a, a grill out there, uh, for the firemen to use. out there for the firemen to use. But again, that's just included as future, so they don't have to come back. Oh, and this is also an engineered, fully engineered site plan, so that the engineers don't have to come back through TRC to get that site plan approval. They can move on to permitting after this is approved. And then again, you have your two access points, the southernmost being that ingress-ingress, and the northern one being egress or exit-only, with the do-not-enter signs. And then that southern driveway is the current driveway to that proposed barn, so that access is being maintained. So your options as the board, because this is a public use application, it has to be approved by the Board of County Commission, so your options are to recommend approval for project 2025010065 for public use for Fire Station 51, County Road, at 245 County Road 305. There are a couple pending development, engineering, and health department comments, really just that the proposed well site has to be shifted south, I think another 25 or 50 feet away from the stormwater retention area. Just a couple minor little changes that we expect to be revised before it goes to the Board of County Commission. So you can recommend approval pending those changes. You can recommend denial of the project, or you can determine that more information is needed and continue the application to a time and date served. And with that, I will close out, awaiting any questions or comments from the board.
Okay, thank you. I guess you are the applicant, right?
I believe so, in this situation, yes.
All right. Any questions by the board? If not, I'll open it to public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to comment, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Raymond Royer, 3 Pelican Lane, Flagler Beach. The only question I have is, is the septic system adequate enough for public if it's going to be used for emergency site? We have, it's going to have capacity for, you know, if we have 100 people staying there, that we have a disaster area in that area?
I don't think it, it's not proposed to be a shelter space.
Yeah.
Those are other locations throughout the county. The septic, I believe, permitted through, again, the health department would just be for the firemen and the satellite sheriff's office and a couple members of the public who might come in to use that. But it wouldn't be used as a shelter space or a staging area.
Yeah, that's, that's the only question I have, because I'm glad to see you're putting a firehouse, because we, for national code reasons, we are actually, Flagler County's under national code requirements, and I'm glad to see that you're actually trying to move forward and try to reach those national code standards. Thank you.
Any other member of the public? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number eight, this is legislative, not requiring any disclosure. Planning and Development Board, sitting at the, sitting at the Airport Zoning Commission, review of Airport Zoning Ordinance. Ms. Simone.
Actually, going to be me, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Let's see if we've got this. I don't remember if I had given you this whole presentation. I think it's changed a little bit. I believe you've seen some of this, and so we do have some things that have happened since we last discussed this. And so you'd reviewed the ordinance. We went to Palm Coast, made a presentation there, also had a town hall meeting with Commissioner Carney, held in Palm Coast, and had some good public comments came from that. We had a board meeting on March 3rd, and the Board of County Commissioners did designate the Planning and Development Board as the Airport Zoning Commission to meet the statutory requirement. And so we're going to check the box that you had already reviewed this previously, not in your capacity officially as Airport Zoning Commission, but you had reviewed the ordinance prior to this meeting, and then now you've had another opportunity to review it. And then along with that, I've prepared a report, I'm intending for that to be titled as the final report, should you choose to make it that way. And so that that would then serve as the final report on airport zoning presented to the Board of County Commissioners to accompany the draft ordinance. And so there's two actions for you. Reviewing the ordinance, which hasn't materially changed, but will change some. County Attorney's Office, primarily Sean Moylan, who is busier than a one-armed paper hanger, has the task of going through and amending that somewhat. There's a lot of redundancy in the model ordinance that came out of the FDOT's Aviation Office. And so there's, I think the point I made in the, in the staff report was one that talked about eminent domain. We don't need to talk about that. It's one of the tools already in our toolbox. We don't have to talk about the tools that are already available to us. And, and so that, that ordinance will be cut down some, clarified some, but more or less in its, in its present condition, that's how it's going to move forward to the Board of County Commissioners. And that hearing schedule, I believe, is April 7th and April 21st, I think are those two dates we're anticipating. First reading on the 7th, second reading adoption on the 21st, assuming that you then approve and recommend, as you did last time, approval of the ordinance, and then this time also with the, the acceptance and recommendation on the final report to be advanced to the Board of County Commissioners. I have to turn on the power on the clicker, sorry. And so this you may have seen before, but this gives us kind of our pretext for why we're doing this, that all public-use airports have to do this. One thing that was mentioned, it's not just public airports, it's public-use airports. So that if you had a private airport and you were open to the public, you'd also have to include this within your, your airport zoning as well. And so think of this in, in counties that are much larger than us, that have multiple airport facilities, Orange County, Palm Beach County, those, those counties that have certainly more of air activity, more airports themselves. Jacksonville has multiple airports that are, that are part of their airspace. And so for us, you know, we kind of get tied up a little bit with it, saying, well, Flagler County, well, this is the, we only got the single airport, and so this is adoption of Flagler County Airport zoning, not necessarily specific, although it ends up being specific to our airport, because we only have one. And so basically, when we're looking at it, we're only looking at the Flagler Executive Airport. And so it comes down to that, probably that second bullet more than anything else, obstructions is what this is about. And Chapter 333 is about creating safe airspace for the aviation and your economic development driver that's in our community, the, the airport again. So if we end up doing this, this will call out airport hazard areas that are delineated in this map series. The map series would be adopted in some form. We're probably going to have some kind of tool that I mentioned last time, that will have some kind of lookup where property owner could go on there and, and look up their address and see how many of these surfaces or zones are within, you know, how this height effect, how this, this actual height obstruction permitting would end up affecting their property, and, and short answer, it likely would not. But ultimately, this will need to be adopted by the cities of Bonnell and City of Palm Coast, because both of those jurisdictions have these airport hazard areas within their jurisdictions, so that you'll see how these extend out beyond our, our airport boundaries themselves. Added this, and maybe you hadn't seen this before, this is that particular section there and kind of telling us why we have to do this, it's required, and it mentions in here that Airport Protection Zoning Regulations under Subpart C there, adopted in the paragraph A, must and a minimum require, and then you got through five items, permit for construction alteration or any obstruction, obstruction marking and lighting for obstructions, documentation showing compliance to federal requirement, valid aeronautical studies submitted for each person applying for a permit, consideration of criteria when determining whether to issue or deny a permit, that's guidance for us, and then finally, then approval is not based solely on the determination by the FAA, proposed structure is not an airport hazard. And then this section also, I like this one just because of the headings, Airport Zoning Regulation Requirements. Again, you thought I just read requirements, well, then this one's also labeled it, but a little different. And so this one says it's got to be reasonable, there's got to be independent justification, got to deal with non-conforming uses in some way. And then it's got to have a linkage to your adoption of your master plan and your notice to affected local governments. And so one of the things we, we also talked about on, on March 3rd, the board is going to start a new airport master planning process. There will be a committee of aviation stakeholders that will be involved in, in that process. And so, you know, mentioning this on the, on the zoning side is one part of our, our tools, our tools in our toolbox. Master plan updates, something else on another side that's out there. And one of the questions that we had that came back from, from the cities, I believe it's from City of Palm Coast, was, you know, what, how are we involved in that? Well, that last number four there says that the city's involved, city has to be notified, has to, has to be aware of us moving into this update to our airport master plan. And so that it's got some notification and expect then that they would, they would be a key partner with that. And then this talks about, this is that last section, I think in Chapter 333, that talked about, well, what happened if we didn't do this? We had July 1st, 2017 was the deadline that's out there, a bit of a paper tiger, there's not a whole lot of penalty that's out there. This particular exercise we're involved in right now is because of grant language that shows up in FDOT grants that says that we have adopted this, and we've been kind of moving through it all along, saying, yeah, we've got it. And you'll see in a moment kind of why we thought that, or why we've at least asserted that on our end. And then you read that last part at the bottom, it says, oh, by the way, if, if you didn't adopt it, then the Department FDOT shall administer the permitting process as provided in 333.025. They'll continue to do the same thing they've done before. And so if you go back and read what this had said, was really what this puts in motion is a permitting process that before DOT had done, and then now it says, oh, no, no, we're not going to do it anymore, we're going to let you do it locally. Congratulations. And so, you know, that, that was the bitter pill, unfunded mandate, whatever you want to read into this, that's what it was, that was to be done and adopted locally. And I get it, to one extent, the idea is, is the government that, you know, serves you best, is the government's closest to you. But the other part about this is, is that the, you know, the, the larger agency that's charged with looking at these things on a, on a daily basis, or, or working in lockstep with FAA, was, was previously to this, the one that was handling this. Now this takes that thing that was at Tallahassee and takes it and makes it local. This is the airport diagram itself for the airport, how the airport's laid out. Thought this was useful because it showed the length of the primary runway at that 5,000 feet, I think is what it shows there. And then that's 1129, right? I can't see it because I don't have my glasses on, and I don't have it up here in front of me. And then it showed the, the height of the elevation then, that's the important part, is, is the, the field elevation. And so more than anything else, I wanted that as the takeaway, and you see that I mentioned that in the staff report, that we're talking about elevation above the, the airport surface. And so that when we're talking about those, those zones that are there, they're not above sea level, they're above the, the airport surface, is how the, the imaginary surfaces, the zones that are part of, of this regulation are, are calculated vertically from the airport itself. This is an example of a FAA sectional chart, and so this is a one that's right there for our airspace. And I had this included in the presentation I made to the city, because this showed those obstructions that are, are previously permitted and that are, are marked and known. And, and so that, you know, you'll see there, the Espinola Tower of note, 1,248 feet, and that's, that's above sea level on that number, and then the 1204 is above the ground level, AGL is the second number below in the, in the parentheses. And so just as an example, that's, that, that graphic that's there shows it's a guide tower, and it's pretty close to what we see as a, as a transitional, as an approach area for the, the landing aircraft at our airport right now. So imagine these surfaces then as creating this, this three-dimensional model running from the, the Enzor air, from our runways. And so that you can see how, how the horizontal surface then creates a, a, a flat layer, then upwards from there, the conical surface, approach surfaces running, running on the ends of those runways, transitional running up from the approach surface, that's kind of generally what I can provide as that, that distinction with those. And then, and then more particularly, these are all defined in the Code of Federal, Code of Federal Regulations at Part 77. Horizontal, flat plane, 150 feet above the airport, encompassing larger area for larger runways. Conical and outward sloping zone from the horizontal surface providing additional clearance. Your primary centered along the runways slightly beyond each end, width varies based on the runway type and approach procedures. Your approach surface extends out beyond the runway ends, ensuring the clear path for the landing aircraft with a length depending on the airport precision visual or instrument. Precision runways have much larger approach surfaces than your transitional surfaces. Slope areas kind of connecting everything running outward, you can see them particularly from your approach surfaces where you see those, and then ensuring the smooth transition between those. So these together, these all were looked at as part of what we did in 2009. And so this was done collectively with the city. City had some funds that they were able to allocate for this, and this was approval of Palm Coast Flagler County Airport Area Master Plan. Remember when I said 2017? Well, this is 2009. And then this had a component that talked about zoning and land use, and this is the graphic that accompanied that. Pretty busy. Mainly just wanted you to kind of take note of, kind of what it looks like with the blobs and how that extension runs out pretty close to, I think it's actually over that Espinola Tower on the, on the approach surface there on the far end, out to the, to the northwest. And you can see how those, those surfaces all run outward from, from the runways themselves. Excuse me. And then zooming in, you know, this is basically the airport grounds themselves, and what you saw then in the 2009 plan of what were identified, at least as far as your, your closer areas, your horizontal in the orange, your runway surfaces then on, on the runway itself then showing. And then we had an interlocal, just to demonstrate that we were talking at the time, so then when we got closer to 2017, staff had met, we talked about some of these things. This interlocal was more geared towards utilities, but what we had done is, is more or less what we've done since, well, we were doing this informally from, from as long as I've been here, but this made it a little bit more formal. And so what this did was this had us review each other's development plans occurring within the, basically within the confines of the airport. And so what I'm demonstrating here with this is that it wasn't that we were unaware that we didn't have something in place, we had something in place. 2009, we had adopted jointly, what I believe, for all intents and purposes, was airport zoning, not having that particular name, but it had the zones that were there, it had the map. Our board adopted it, the, the City of Palm Coast City Council adopted it, and then we had a cooperative method here. We weren't doing the permitting step that was done, that was called out in, in all the rigor of the statute, but this, I think, was probably the most important step. And then that area then, within which the confines identified in that map for us to do this cooperative planning, was the airport itself. You can see it's the canal at the south end, on the, on the east side was Seminole, Seminole Woods, north side was State Road 100, and then the west side was Bel Air Boulevard. And it included the guard site, that was what we had then at the very south end. So we were prepping for this ordinance, we had the grant talk that came up, we were going through and, and bringing forward a different ordinance that we had actually prepared in 2000, in 2023. We had presented it to FDOT, hadn't heard anything about it, had given it to them in the fall of 2023. And then we discovered, I discovered this, we discovered this, 2024, this was the guidebook from FDOT Aviation's, Aviation Office that had the new model. And so this is what formed the basis of what we have, and then this is how that model, those, those Part 44 surfaces, how those look, very similar to what was done in 2009. And so what I've done here is I've taken these and broken these out, and you can see the horizontal. And that's, to me, basically what we end up having as that which affects the majority of the properties and kind of sets a lower limit, 150 feet. Conical running out upwards, having a bit more height that's permitted within that area, reflective to the outer areas of where the operations, air operations are happening in, in that outer fringe. As you move further out, these areas move up and have a, have a more vertical allowance. Primary being ground level, but showing just the confines of the, of the limits of the airport itself. Approach, that being that one that extends furthest out based on the runway itself and the approach zones for landing activity. And then transitional, that area that I talked about that kind of ties it all in together. Question that came up at the City of Palm Coast was, okay, Adam, what are you talking about? I said, well, primarily what I'm talking about is an area around the airport having 150-foot height limit. And so if you're building something at 149 feet, you don't have to go through a permitting process. So the questions came back, well, what does this do to my house? I don't think it's going to do anything to your house. You know, if you wanted to build 151-foot tower in your backyard, then you'd have to go through a permitting process. And, and so luckily... And, and so luckily this does coincide with the city's limit that they have on cell towers. They limit their height at a hundred and fifty feet. And so it coincides very well with, with their work that they have. You may have temporary incursions into the airspace, that would still go through permit just the same as, as anything else that we had that. And I mentioned that before to you, where we had the air conditioning replacements at the hospital, tilt up construction that happens at BJ's, kind of the one offs that happen where those are encroaching into our airspace in temporary sense. This graphic, I think, tells it better than anything else and, and not for the numbers, not for anything that's showing here, other than you can see the tower that's with, that's approaching above that, that red line. And so if you're above it, then you're, you're going through that permitting process, you're doing the notice. If you're below it, you don't have to do anything, you know? And so depending on where you are within that airspace, so that's where I think that lookup tool is going to be helpful for us too, if we can get that working where somebody can go and look at, at that and say, okay, if I'm, if I'm out there and I'm doing a two hundred foot cell tower in Benel and I'm out in the, in the hinterlands and I'm not affected by any of the airspace, do I have to go through an FAA process? No. I don't remember why I put this in here, other than I think it was talking about, let's see, noise contours, I think was what this one was. And so this one talks about the options that are there. The first one was that we would, we would have a part one fifty study, we don't have that. The other one was is that we'd have or another study approved by FAA that would have set the noise contour for our airport. And if we don't have that, then we would have a, a, a graphic that would depict half the distance of your longest runway as the buffer zone surrounding your, 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 basically your airside, your, your runway areas. And so if you remember, I had had a graphic before, got everybody kind of riled up, not the intent, but that's that subpart D that's there that says, okay, if you don't have these airport noise studies, you haven't done this, you haven't done your part one fifty, and that's not a cheap thing. If you haven't done your part one fifty, FAA is going to tell you there, when you need to do it, and they're going to help you pay for it. We didn't have that. We did have a noise study, it's not the part one fifty. But if you didn't have that, then you'd have this area within which you'd have this zone map and then this, this arbitrary zone, somewhat arbitrary. And then within that, then you could have no new incompatible uses, activities or modifications, those incompatibility uses, incompatible uses. And so it mentions in there, runway protection zone. And so that's one part of this, and then also the noise contours themselves. The surfaces I mentioned before were all, all part of a, what's known as an airport height notification zone. And then this one, together, the runway protection and the noise zones themselves are a separate consideration within which uses are restricted as far as if you're, if you're within these areas, then, then you, you cannot have a residential use, you cannot have a educational use or a new landfill. And so that you can see where the runway protection zones do overlap just a little bit outside of the airport boundaries, airport boundaries are gray on this, but down at that southwest corner, that's actually sitting over Stormwater Pond down there and, and our stuff at the guard. And at the north end, those two little areas at the, at the northeast should fall into the navigation easements. One of them is in a BJ's at Cornerstone in a wetland area that was set aside as part of their development. The other one, I think, still falls into a navigation easement. So those effectively are no build areas wherever this yellow shows up, the runway protection zones. This is that environmental assessment, the noise study we did in November, in October two thousand nine. And this is a result of that. And this, what this did was this had a sixty-five D N L contour that was set up, day, night noise level. I went into detail in this and that final report of what that means. And so one of the things that came out at our hearing that we had, our, our discussion with the city, city council at the workshop, correction, at the workshop with them, was that the, a nighttime noise level is weighted. And so one of the things that happens is that, I believe it's a ten time wait is what's added to it. And it, it's a little confusing because it says between ten PM and midnight and midnight and seven AM, but that's the, the period, it's actually from ten PM to seven AM. Noise levels that are part of the study that were, that were evaluated as part of this. And this is a, a, a bit of a, a worst case. So what they do when they do these noise studies, they take the actual ground level noise that's monitored, that's, that's sampled, and then put it into a model. And that model's based on, in this case, it was based on the runway being elongated, shifted to the south. You can see how that, that is where, that's why I refer to this as an option, this is when we made the, the longer runway. And then also on a mix of aircraft that could be accommodated on that. And so it's not going to come back and say, you're going to have seven forty-seven traffic twenty-four seven. It will come through and it will say, you know, could you have that, what's the biggest aircraft you could have, Gulfstream five being the, the one we come back with, a business jet? And also again, doesn't assume that's going to be the bulk of your traffic, but it does incorporate those, those largest jets, the noisiest aircraft that you could possibly have operating into that noise study in, in part of that review. And so that's what this looks like then in, in how we've interpreted it. And you can see how the noise contour is completely within the boundaries of, of the airport itself. One thing to mention, if the airport layout, airport master plan changes in any way, you know, our airport mix, our, our aircraft mix changes, and we'd hope that technology is going to get better and that aircraft are going to get less noisy, is what we'd hope would happen. But if it doesn't happen and somehow, you know, the noise study that comes out of this new airport master plan comes back and says, this is different, this map will be redrawn. And then if any part of that contour extends out beyond the airport boundary, then we'll start talking about non-conformities. So you saw where I had runway protection completely within the limits. Don't anticipate this may change much, but if the airport runways got longer, then your, your runway protection zone, your RPZs would, would elongate then based on the extension of the runways themselves. Same will happen then with the noise contour, that if noise contour changes, you will have to look at both of these and potentially then look at what we would do. First option being potentially land acquisition. You know, we, we want to acquire maybe less than fee, we'll do navigation easements that will extend out so we can regulate the uses to make sure that those areas, if there are areas that extend out beyond the airport boundaries, which presently there are not, but if there are, we would want to make sure that those are not developed with new residential uses, new educational uses, or new landfill uses. So again, that's what the, the height notification area looks like. The ordinance more or less creates a, a height notification process for permitting. Our next steps that we're coming back with, March eleventh, you've got tonight, what we're hoping to come out of this with the second reading and again, recommendation on the adoption of the ordinance, and then the approval of the final report, and then I'll present that final report to the board, and then that first public hearing, second public hearing and adoption then on the twenty-first. I've got a little slide here for questions, but then I'll look to Roy to correct everything I've gotten wrong if he, or he's also available for any questions that you have. And so that I'll close, await any questions or comments. And do want to make sure that if you have questions directly on the final report, that we take care of those now because that's the thing that's key on our timing. We need to make sure that that advances forward along with the ordinance to the board, that as you saw, fifteen days is what I've got. Feel free to give me any comments and I'll make edits, but need to get that to the board as soon as we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mingle. Remember the board have anything to discuss on this item?
I was just want to clarify, so basically what you're saying, we may not have known it and it may not have been called that, but at one time we did have an overlay ordinance put together with the City of Palm Coast.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was ever, ever called or ever formally, it's safe to say, it was never formally recognized as airport zoning. It did not meet the full requirements of the statute, but for all intents and purposes, you know, that, that, when I looked at that map, I was like, wow, I mean, this is it. You know, we, we, we were ahead of the curve. And, and so that was two thousand nine, you know, good foreshadowing of what was coming then in twenty sixteen. And we had met, we, I think the, to me, the, the biggest issue that we had was that for us, the airport is already zoned appropriately, it's zoned industrial. And so with having an airport in an incorporated area zoned appropriately, surrounded by cities, we looked at it and said, we don't have an issue. And the cities kind of looked at it and said much the same, that there wasn't a whole lot left to be developed. There have been some plats that have come in, but for the most part, those plats to the south of the airport were already done in the county before they annexed into the city. And we confirmed at our, our workshop that there were notification processes that the county had prescribed in, in our zoning approval that were continued by the city when they annexed, which we were very happy to hear. So that, you know, where ordinarily, you know, we think about it, Palm Coast lots that are, are, were developed previously, don't have those notification provisions, but these new subdivisions will.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Adam, how did we become the Airport Zoning Commission? And what does that mean?
You missed that meeting?
Oh, that was a good meeting.
What does it mean? What are we, what is our future obligation here?
I'll, I'll turn it over to Sean, but I'll, I'll be real quick with it, was that the, the statute, we had a discovery at, at our last meeting that we had a step that we were missing and that Airport Zoning Commission was, was that step. And statute will only kick you in as the Airport Zoning Commission when you're adopting this or when you're changing it. So Sean.
So we don't hear disputes regarding the airport as we go forward, we're just part of the process of implementing this new ordinance?
That's correct, just the legislative step. It's specifically required by statute and the statute suggests that local governments utilize their planning and zoning board because they're used to zoning concepts.
Okay.
There were a lot of people that were complaining that they wanted to have people in the aviation pilots and all this appointed on that board. But I think everybody quickly realized there is a, there's a committee that's going to be set up for that, but this really has to do with land, this has to do with zoning, this is stuff that should be covered by this board.
Anything else? All right, so we need to make a motion to, to accept this?
I, I would say yes, specifically if you can call out the, the recommendation, approve, deny any conditions, whatever you, you have there on the, on the ordinance itself, you already seen that last time, hasn't changed substantially. And then the other one.
Do we need to call for a public comment?
I think we probably could.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to comment, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Raymond Royer, Three Pelican Lane, Flagler Beach. I got to listen to this, the hearing when you were discussing it and the state statutes do say that you can give it to the lower government to handle what, the way I understood when the discussion was being brought on. And there was a young lady here that was asking for aviation. And I've been looking for the master plan, so I'm guessing the master plan's with, with Palm Coast. Is that where the master? I can't find the master plan. So the young lady was bringing about the master plan that was previous used, that used gentleman should really look at because she was trying to emphasize that that was all done by aviators and used gentleman or not, like she claimed, you're not qualified to discuss that. And that's the only thing I had to say because you're talking about, right now, yeah, you're talking about property and zoning and all that. But what I didn't hear in this discussion was the tower, you know? We just had a recent helicopter crash into a commercial airlines. And unfortunately, the military helicopter was actually flying too high and the commercial airlines tried to veer off to avoid the crash. The investigation also found out that unfortunately, the tower was undermanned. Okay? And I don't know how your tower's set up, but if you're undermanned and he's trying to communicate on two different frequencies, and I do understand that there's times, the military does use this facility. Am I correct? Military sometimes uses?
They do.
Okay, so here you go. Now you're ever going to have one guy up in the tower trying to do public, you know, Lear jets and stuff coming in, and then you're going to have this guy come in and do commercial airlines, I mean helicopters hovering, and then he's going to have maybe possibly military flying in and around. He's going to be on two different frequencies. So you gentleman got to consider all the safety factors involved in this. I think that the airport is going to get way over its head and you could possibly have a serious crash. And the crash might even happen over the residential areas, you know, surpass the buffer zones. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment back to the board.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I would like the gentleman to know and anybody else who may be listening that the Flagler County website, flaglercounty.gov, if you navigate to that website and go to the airport page, you will see the airport master plan there.
Right.
We're going to be updating that master plan beginning this year. And that is something that is entirely appropriate to have the input of people who are involved in aviation, pilots, airports, also industry, anybody. Planning is also part of that as well because it's essentially the comprehensive plan of the airport. However, this process has nothing to do with the towers guiding flights, radars, the layout of the, the runways, that's already set in the master plan. This is about the permitting of obstructions like cell towers, things that airplanes could run into. And also making sure that the use of land near the airport is compatible. So we don't want to have a new landfill at the end of a runway because birds could, you know, fly into the engines and you don't want a school or a library at the end of your runway, that, that sort of thing. This is a land use and zoning type of item, not an aviation item.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. What's the pleasure of the board?
I moved to approve.
Moved, moved forward it up, yes. We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda, staff comments. Anything from staff?
Not from me.
Board comments?
No.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on any item not associated with items on these, tonight's agenda?
Raymond Royer, Three Pelican Lane, Flagler Beach. I'd like to discuss River Beach subdivision. I think it was Timothy, might have been Mark, when I was here previously, and they made comments that that subdivision is a mess. Well, I did some homework and it's a mess. I reached out to my surveyor and he happens to sit on the board and he would not help me with the surveying that I was looking for. So I did find another boundary survey to come in. And the problem we have is our subdivision plat doesn't show any road names, it's just private roads and it shows a fifty right of way. So we don't have no easements, we don't have widths of roads. I've been trying to figure out how we can come up with some roads, but as I'm trying to measure out roads to accommodate, you gentlemen mentioned earlier, when you were reviewing from an aerial, that the cul-de-sac in the back was illegal. I, I totally agree with you. So I'm trying to figure out, so the original plat actually showing the, the fifty foot right of ways, it will be, is correct. We just got to come up for a roadway as neighbors. What I'm asking, I'm going to ask again, will the board and zoning and planning help us? Because what I'm finding out is we have utilities in the way too now. Not much so the telephone poles or the power lines coming in. It's like, it would be like the telephone and it would be like the television cables. They are actually going to be encroached in the roads that we probably are going to move forward. I'm also going to start a, we can't even do an organization if we want to become an HOA because the county has approved so much subdividing properties that, I mean, we have one property that's actually annexed to another subdivision. I don't know how that's possible, but it happened. So we're, HOA is out of question. So I'm going to develop an advisory board so we can move forward. Now I understand under state statute, we only need two thirds to change our restrictions and our easements and all that stuff. So I, I'm really close to sixteen people right now. So, and I also noticed in two thousand and twenty-two, the state statutes have improved for somebody like us to, to improve our restrictions and our, and our covenants. So we're going to take that and we're going to improve and make our own covenants and restrictions because most of our neighbors don't want our, we don't want an HOA, you know, we don't really want. don't really want the county to be in our business. So that's where we're at. So we're going to actually move forward on that. And again, like I said earlier, when I first met you, you're going to see my face a lot because I've been down this road before, south of here, when I was dealing with 280 properties. And this animal I'm dealing with now is 24 properties. And the difference here is I'm dealing with the county. There I was dealing with a POA and it was much easier. So I'm asking to cooperate with me. And I'm reaching out to the surveyor, if he would, I'm not sure who he is. I don't know if it's Ron or Don, is it Don? Okay, Don. I'm reaching out to you because I like to work with you. I don't think we have a conflict of interest. We just, we just need some guidance. And what I'm trying to do is bring our life back into our plat so we can move forward and make this River Beach subdivision what it was supposed to be when it was recognized by the county in 1959. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chair, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
May I comment to that?
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I have talked, I didn't, Stephanie talked to me and I explained to him that as a surveyor sitting on the board, I apologize if I'm able to do more for you. But I didn't want to create a conflict of interest. And I don't know where those ex parte communications lie. And I didn't want to put you in a compromised situation by my involvement in that in any way, shape or form. That's why I tried to step out as quickly as I could. I apologize for not being there to you more, being able to help you. I understand the situation you're in from a surveyor's perspective. You're in between a rock and a hard place.
Yes, I am.
It's a tough place to be. I'm sure, I would hope that we'll be able to find some way, some path forward with you to be able to get to where you need to be and your community.
Yeah. Yeah, we like to become a community because if you look north of us and south of us, the driverless peak road, everything's like a community. We're like a bastard child. And I've been down that road before. So I like to try to correct it and I, we have like at least 16 neighbors that want to move forward and become a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.